Walton School District of North Posey. And by doing so, I'd like to invite everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item up is the consent agenda. And the approval of that, which contains a whole list of things, including our minutes from our previous meeting of April 11th, and our crane docket of April 11th to May 9th. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mrs. Will to approve the consent agenda with all items listed. Any comments or questions? I do have the one question, just for clarification, on the band overnight trip. I just want to make sure that it's clarified that it's voluntary, and there won't be any kind of repercussions if somebody's not able to attend that.
We'll make the minutes read that they're approving for the band to begin to raise their money and do the things that they need to do to be able to go on the trip to New Orleans on 2017. But there will be no repercussion or no penalty if a student in the band decides not to participate or go.
That would satisfy.
Any other comments or questions?
Just the two retirees and the years of service on both Mrs. Mitchell and Mason are, you know, 15 and 37 years.
Absolutely, we want to extend our gratitude to them. Mrs. Mitchell for 37 years as a teacher, and Mrs. Mason for 15 years as a bus driver.
Yep, and the thank you notes are there too.
Yeah, we have thank you notes that we have passed around for them. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Our next item is patron concerns, and there's nobody signed up for that, so we're good there. So new business.
Okay, we have Shalane Niemeyer from South Terrace here to do a presentation on iPad. So we'll turn the meeting over to you.
I'm just going to introduce Shalane. She's our kindergarten teacher at South Terrace, if you don't know her, Mrs. Niemeyer. And she wanted, we knew that you all liked to see some of the things that we're doing in the classrooms, but our kindergarteners couldn't come tonight. So you're going to be the students. And so she is going to show you some things that she does in the classroom with iPads.
I'm going to be using a program called Plickers. Some of us use it at South Terrace, and I know some teachers at North use it as well. I have five questions that we're going to go through. Some are geared towards what it would look like in kindergarten, and some are geared towards what it would look like in fifth or sixth grade for I-Step preparation. I'm going to pass out one of these cards. And if you notice, none of them are going to look right, or look alike if you share it with... Yeah. Each of you need a special number, because I have you programmed into the system.
Jeffrey, you're up then.
I'm special, huh?
Jeffrey. Mr. Kent, you can get one, you can get one before.
This is a program that we learned at the Four Seas Conference last year that the corporation paid for our teachers to attend. And we're also attending it again this year. So we picked it up there, and we're getting more iPads into our classrooms, but this is a program that can be used with only one iPad. Whenever I was using one iPad last year, I utilized it. So on your clicker, you will notice there is A, B, C, and D. And I'm going to show you a question with a multiple choice answer. So the answer that you want, you want to point towards the ceiling. Okay? So our first question is, which ends with the S sound? A, apple, B, dress, C, tree, or D, ladder? So whenever you're ready, just hold it up and watch for your name up there. When it gets a check mark, that means I have read your card with my iPad. So you want to point it towards me.
You have to lift yours up.
There we go, okay. And I tell my students, as soon as you see the check mark, put it down, because it's a lot more time consuming to do 20 kids in a scan. But it gives immediate feedback to the teacher. And I can see here, right on my iPad, exactly who answered what question. It turns it red if you get it wrong. It turns it green if you get it right. So I can immediately pull small groups during centers and go over a topic right there without having to grade anything. So then my kids like to do the graph, and they see it, and then it reveals their answer and what the right answer was. B, so five people got it right. Now, as a teacher, I can see it. You can show it, I don't like to show it whenever you reveal the answers to kind of call it the kids that get it wrong. So I don't usually use this form of it, I use the graph.
So I got it wrong?
Did you have, did you have B pointed towards the ceiling?
What was the question?
Which ends with the S sound?
I was going with starts with the A sound.
And I can manipulate the question, and it also gives me... It also gives me a percentage right away, like 83% of you got it correct. So it can give you a mass total of, if this is something your class is grasping or not, as a whole, or if you need to reteach a lesson. So we're going to go into small group later, and we're going to go over that S sound, okay? All right, and I can manipulate the questions from the iPad. So here's the next question, which shape is a cylinder? You want the answer pointed towards the ceiling. Now, if you notice, it's hard to copy off your neighbor, because you have different, you have different shapes, and they're in different angles, so it makes it hard for them to copy. Okay, I'm going to start scanning. Okay, and I have everybody, but I forgot to flip it back up here. Thank you. So everyone has the check mark, so then we could go to the graph. If you just want to do that, that would probably make it easier. And 100% got it right.
Yeah, I could have said, I just wanted to see the graph.
Those are the questions that we typically see in kindergarten, early first grade. So then we wanted to focus on the upper end, so fifth and sixth grade preparing for I-Step. So you can copy and paste pictures. These are, three questions are actually pulled from an exact park test, like practice test. So you can give them exact graphs, or formulas, or whatever they might see. So what is the volume of a rectangular prism in cubic units?
You can guess it wrong if you want. I think, I should.
You can work it out, I'll give you some think time.
So the dimensions of that?
It's just in unit. One cube is one unit.
Yeah, so one, yeah, one cube is one unit.
I'm going to guess.
That's okay.
Look at my engineering friend to my right. I had it right. Let the record reflect, I had it right this time.
This is an actual fifth grade question that we use to practice for I-Step.
So this is an application that the students aren't using the iPad, the teachers use the iPad.
The teacher is using the iPad. And I have, my kids keep these in a folder in their desk, and I mean, they beg me to use them. Are we going to use Plickers today? Do we get to use the Plickers today? So I mean, they're excited, and they like it, and they like to see their name pop up, and they, I mean, they love using this program. Okay, so everyone have their answers in, I'm going to scan. All right. Oh, she called you out, I did not do that. I would have gone to the graph, no. Okay, we got two more questions to go through. Now, this is a question that we've been seeing a lot on I-Step preparation where, and it's, I'll read it to you, it's kind of small print. Where they have two answers they're going to have to pick from. Now, this is kind of a downfall of Plickers, because you can't hold up two number, two at the same time. So I made it to where you pick two choices here. So you have an expression, 5/6 plus 3/12ths. Which expressions have like denominators that could be used as the next step to add two fractions together? Select the two correct answers.
I can't even see that.
Yeah, and this one, it's kind of blurry on this one. It looked good on mine in my classroom. So it's 5/6 plus 1/4th, 5/6 plus 3/6th, 10/12th plus 3/12th, 5/12th plus 6/12th, 5/12th plus 6/24th, and 20/24th plus 6/24th.
Normally, on their names, it doesn't have a red or a green, does it?
No, that was Amy calling them out. No, I always look to the graph, anyway. The kid's not embarrassed if they're the only one that, you know, misses the ending letter S, so.
So the answer is, you tell them the answer, let them hold it up so we can see the graph from 100%.
Oh, is that what you wanted to do? I got a couple already holding it up. If you see the check mark, you can put it down, that means I got yours.
Nervous on this one.
Okay, so everyone's in. Okay, so your correct answer, and I know it was hard to see, is, is D, which is C and F. So C was the 10/12ths and 3/12ths, and F was the 20/24ths and 6/24ths. And I had a sixth grade teacher check these, so she told me all my answers were correct. Okay, we have one more. Using a graph. Why do these look bigger in my classroom? Greg is volunteering at a track meet. He is in charge of providing the bottled water. Greg knows these facts. The track meet will last three days. There will be 117 athletes, seven coaches, and four judges attending the track meet. And one case of bottled water contains 24 bottles. The table shows the number of bottles of water each athlete, coach, and judge will get for each day of the track meet. So you have athletes get four, coaches get three, and judges get two. What's the fewest number of cases of bottled water that Greg will need to provide for all the athletes, coach, and judges at the track meet?
That was a whole lot of math.
We all want to be great.
So this is fifth grade, this isn't kindergarten.
This is fifth grade, no, this is not kindergarten. If my kindergarteners do it, I need to pay raise.
And usually, it is a lot bigger, too, where the kids...
Yeah, in my classroom, it's not, it shows up bigger. I don't know if it's the projector or the Promethean board, but...
Do kids looking around to see which direction we're supposed to?
No, because if you notice, they're, they're all different. So there was one question where they all about 100%. And normally, I turn my lights off, so it's even harder for them to see the person next to them. So it is difficult, because they're printed so small. And every shape is different. All right, scan. And what I'm seeing on my iPad is when you're holding up your card, it pops up your name with what you answered. So I could say, I can say, Greg, you might want to check your answer. You might want to double check your work. And it doesn't, I mean, I can register it and wait to reveal everything, and I could tell them, you know, you need to look at that one again, or partner up with Brett and make sure, you know, work that out. So you can have that direct, instant feedback from the student. And there were your answers. Do you guys have any questions about the program?
So the teacher could use their personal device for this.
They could. There are times when, like, Mrs. McGinnis and I share iPads, because she does her reading block in the afternoon, and I do mine in the morning. And there are times that I would get my phone out, and I use my phone, I have the program on my phone. So it's, yeah, you can use personal devices, because it runs through, I mean, as long as they're logged on the guest network, it runs through the internet and not like the server.
And it's adaptable for any grade. That's what is good about it. You can do it for any subject, any grade.
Now, my kindergarteners, they take, I mean, five or six times of using them to like, you know, get to know like, oh yeah, I didn't put the A towards the ceiling if I went with that answer. But I mean, by Christmas time, they had the hang of it. I mean, I could give an eight-question kit quiz in four minutes. And I can look back and see who got it right, who got it wrong, if I want to get grades, if I want to do anything like that, so.
And that's saved, and you can refer to it?
Yeah, there's a library. And when I go into my history, and I pull it up, and it tells me, so that athletic question, we were 33%. The fractions question, we were 50%. So I can pull it all up, and it tells me all that data.
And the kids love it.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very nice.
You want your cards?
You can keep them, souvenir stuff. Thank you very much.
I'm going to do that next New Year's Eve.
There you go.
Fifth grade math question.
And Plickers was free, right?
Yeah, Plickers is a free application.
Yeah, Plickers is a free application.
Since we're on that topic, is there any way that we could, every so often, send out, since we're using social media better now, what some of the apps and programs that we're using in the schools? So parents could... I mean, I know we can send them out on newsletters and things like that, but a lot of times, if it's, it's right there in social media, you click it, or go get it, and then you've got it.
Can you do that on that webpage and Facebook?
Yeah, we could put, I mean, we could, we want to do it every month.
I mean, it'd be kind of neat, every so often, to see, hey, kindergarten parents, these are some apps that we use in class. Second grade parents, here's a couple of programs we're going to.
Yeah, we could do like one a month, or...
Whatever, just every so often.
That's something we could look at as a technology committee, definitely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, moving on to new business. We want to talk a little bit about the policies that we're going to need to be approving in the June board meeting. The state has issued some internal controls that we are responsible for following. The state has an array of different policies that we could pass. Some people have already jumped on this and approved it. We need to approve this in our June board meeting. The internal controls will set the thresholds for our material loss, our shortages, or our thefts, and any fund, fund problems that we would have. Before you, I have one policy, which is the sample policy from ASBO, who handles the financial, the organization helps us with the financial information. We also have, the central office is responsible for setting this and doing this and following it. And then we push it down to the treasures in the schools. But we have to, we have to set a threshold of what we're going to report to the DOE, which that's new. We've never had to do that before. And a lot of schools are setting the threshold at $5,000. Now, that does not mean that if somebody would steal something or take something of a lesser value, that we wouldn't go after it or anything like that. But after talking with Mr. Clowers, that was the amount that they suggested that we'd set. Also, in the new policy, the law, we have to make any, we have to report to the DOE, which we've never had to do before, any inappropriate spending or misappropriations. You know, so misappropriations would be, it's basically illegal to buy car out of capital projects. And if I would go and buy a car out of capital project, then somebody would have to report me to them. It could be that a principal or somebody would want to pay a salary out of athletics versus going through payroll. That would be a misappropriation of funds. So we have to, we have to know all of that and do all that. And we will, we have a sample policy that's in your packet. Also, I have a sample policy that I did not distribute to tonight. I just got it printed off today. And it is one that some schools have already made. So I will drop that in Office 365 for you as well. And then we'll be sending you some information, more information on the internal controls. One of the things, ASBO is putting on a conference in French Lick. And we're going over to go to the seminar on that. Angie and I just went to one last week. So we're learning everything we can about it, so we can make sure that we get all the where to's and how to's in that policy. Another policy that we'll be bringing to you in, in June will be the criminal gang and criminal activity policy. This is a requirement by the state. There are basically five different, one, two, three, four, five, actually, six different IC codes that this policy encompasses. And I, you know, I'll make sure you have it in Office 365 as well. I will have some sample policies. I'll communicate with you and then bring the finalized policy on this back, back up in the June meeting as well. In the past, back before they changed the the stair steps for teachers, the increment schedule, we had a, an OT/PT policy on how we would pay our OTs and PTs. So once we changed that last year in our master teacher contract, we have to now go back and change how, how we're going to pay our OTs and PTs, because what we referred to in the old policy isn't there anymore. So we have adjusted that, and I'll make sure you have that as well to review over the next month. And finally, we have a hiring and temporary worker agreement policy that we have had in place. We passed it originally in 2005. We updated and revised it in '09. And because of some of those changes as well, some of the things that we have in that policy no longer exist, are not applicable. So we will be changing that policy as well. And I'll be bringing that to you in the June meeting as well. So those are some policies that will be coming up in June that we'll need to be talking about, discuss, and pass. And I'll be getting information to you over the next month. Anybody got any questions about any of those policies? The North Elementary PTO is requesting to purchase some playground equipment and, and build a building out on one of the playgrounds. North Elementary has three different playgrounds. The shelter is going, that they're talking about is the K2 playground. They're also talking about some, a piece of equipment for the 3/4 playground. And if money is available, a piece of equipment for the 5/6 playground. We, we did talk, and I know, we talked, I never really actually spoke with you direct, but I did talk to Mr. Payne, and we were stepping this building off, and we said, well, if it's 12 by 12, we can go buy a $79 tent that's 12 by 12. So we really don't want that. And so we started stepping off, and they have 12 by 24. But in working with him, we would love the 12 by 24, but I have also agreed that if they didn't have the money and to cut back some funds, that we would agree to a 12 by 18, because we stepped it off and saw what we could get in there. So we're asking for up to 12 by 24, but we would accept the 12 by 18, so. And the reason that is, that's the wood increments. And so we're trying to make sure that we don't have to cut and have waste wood. So anyway, we would accept either one of those. So this is a phenomenal project for the PTO, and we're very excited that they're doing that. And I'm asking the board for permission to allow them to proceed with funding and starting these projects. And hopefully, we can get them done before next school.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the PTO request to fund the projects as listed.
I'll second. We're not funding it, right?
No.
PTO is paying for it. There you go.
In the past, I'll just say this though, since you brought that up. In the past, when people have done projects, such as when they did all the work down here for the soccer field, the concrete and all that, we have, in the past, tried to help out with the concrete, because we want that done a specific way. And if it creates a problem, we have helped in past projects, like the Eagle Scout project around the building, to fund some of those things. So concrete, in the past, has been one of the things that we've helped with. So I'd like the permission that we would, if needed, we would help with that.
All right. So you want to change your motion? Or amend your motion to include us taking care of the concrete if need be?
Yeah, I think they've got, they've got in here, we would like to construct it with concrete floor if the budget allows.
So he's saying, yeah.
I would rather have the concrete than gravel. And so I would like for us...
Yeah, so I'll amend, amend mine to state that as well, that we would fund the concrete of it if their budget does not allow for it.
Vince, you okay?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Schmidt and seconded by Mr. Oakley to approve the PTO's fundraising request and improvement project to include the items listed, as well as us funding the concrete if need be. Any comments or questions?
There's no power to that building, it's just by itself, right?
Right now, I mean, I'm thinking that's all they've asked for. We do have power out there. If we needed to get power to it, we could do that at a later date.
And do we know the, we should know the site utilities and everything, where those are running and they're clear?
Yeah, they will have to have all that done before.
Yeah. But it's not running through the major, you know, lines that we just removed.
We really haven't set an actual location back there yet. That would depend on, we'll have Holy Moly come out and set that, and then we'll, then we'll figure out where it goes that fits the kids, teachers, and then we'll place it.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Presented to you in your board packets were the requests from each principal of each building for personnel request. I'm asking the board to approve the 2016-17 personnel request as listed. If you need me to talk about any of the highlighted areas that I can, they're pretty self-explanatory.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve each of the principals' 2016-2017 personnel request as presented.
So a motion by Mrs. Will and seconded by Mr. Stock to approve the each principal's personnel request for 2016 and 17 as presented. Anybody have any comments or questions?
We'll keep an eye on the numbers as we get closer to, to the school year as far as the class sizes and...
We can adjust it, I don't know, we've already adjusted a little bit. We did have an extra teacher at North Elementary in the sixth grade. They bit the bullet this year and helped us through some times. And the numbers look to be about the exact same next year. So instead of making that class do that next year, we did add the third section there, and the numbers do support that.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
The principals have submitted their handbook request. I dropped that into, or Amy did, dropped that into Office 365 for you to review. After reviewing the handbooks, some minor changes, nothing real major in any of the changes, really, in the handbooks. I'm asking the board to approve the handbooks as submitted by the principals.
Do you want me to pull up any?
Each, each building has their own committee, and their committees create, you know, create the handbooks.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the handbooks as presented.
Second?
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Schmidt and seconded by Mrs. Will to approve the handbooks for 2016 and 17 for each building as presented by the corresponding principal. Any comments or questions? My comment I have, and we've made it for a couple of years, or we've talked about it for a couple of years and stated it, is that if we can, if we can continue down the path where the elementary buildings, handbooks mirror each other, handbooks mirror each other, I think it's, I know maybe it's not feasible for them to be identical, but if they could mirror themselves, it would, I think the, the parents would appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
And it's, school's about out, and as a result of that, we're asking the board to approve the request to hold summer school. We're asking for the board to allow us to hold summer school for category one classes, readings, grade one through three, and then any class required for graduation in grades nine through 12. We're asking that we be allowed to offer English, algebra, band, SAE, and government. And we will have to have a 15 to one student teacher ratio. So, I'm asking the board to allow us to move forward with summer school and hold those classes if we have enough students to warrant them all.
We, we have to have a minimum of 15 to one, we don't have to keep it at 15 to one.
No, it can go, it can go as high as we want. And, and the state has bounced back and forth on this piece of it. The 15 to one doesn't have to be, every class has to have 15. We could have 30 in one class and three in another. And because we have 33 students, we could have two teachers. So, they allow, they're allowing us to play with that this year. In the past, the class used, not always, but they have done it both ways.
Is that in the same section, or just a summer school class?
Summer school.
A summer school class, so English could have three, and another we could have 30, but we have two of 15 to one, so we're good.
We, we have to look at the numbers and then look and see if, if something's worth, worth, you know.
Got you. Do you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for summer school as listed.
Second.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mr. Stock to approve the offering of summer school classes as presented. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
I'm asking the board to approve the hiring of the personnel for the different positions. And I can read through all those, or we can just, we can look, you got it on the.
We got it up on the screen.
Screen.
She will have.
There you go. All the positions as listed.
Do you entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve all the positions that have been stated here.
Second.
I'll second it.
So, a motion by Mr. Stock and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the hiring request as presented. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
Next on the list is professional leave. We have a list of professional leave, and I, the, Amy has created it.
Oh, that's why I wasn't going to.
If she can find it.
It's right there.
One of the things that I'd like to talk about, and maybe Angie can say something about this as well, the, we have the learning connections in there, and right now, there are 35 people that are signed up to go to that. It, it costs $40 each. And, you know, we did the, we did the, we did the Four Seas Conference last year as well in Mount Vernon. And Mount Vernon hosts it, but that's a conjunction, in conjunction with them, that they host, and we both go together as a team to offer this. We don't only offer it to our people, we offer it to people in the surrounding area and state, and even Illinois. So, I'll let Angie.
Well, we're hoping to have 400 participants this year, but slowly, the registrations are coming in. I think last week, we were at 135 at the beginning of the week. But it seems like last year, the week before the conference, all of a sudden, we had a lot of registrations coming in. So, we're still hopeful that we'll get to that 400 mark. But in fact, Shalane and Kelly and Steve Kavanaugh have been instrumental in attending the meetings with Mount Vernon and helping to plan this. It's a pirate thing this year, so it should be fun.
So, is this like an eight-hour session per day, or?
Yeah, it'll start, it goes on, we have drawings at four.
Okay.
Yeah, so eight to four, we have keynote speakers coming in. Indoor prizes, so they do the whole, it is a Price is Right theme music, and then the people's names are drawn, and they come on down and get the prizes, yeah. So, yeah, all kinds of vendors coming, and looking forward to it again.
Good.
So, I'm asking the board to approve the, all the professional leaves as listed.
Do you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the professional leave's request as presented.
Second.
I'll second it.
I'll make, I'll make another comment. We have a project lead the way, medical intervention certification. With the retirement of, of one of our teachers, we have, we don't have anybody to be able to teach that class anymore. And project lead the way requires you to have training. So, for Amy Ho, that is a required, a required section, and she has to go get certified to be able to teach that class with the vacancy of Marilyn Rogers.
So, we have a motion by Mrs. Will and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the professional leave request as presented. Any comments or questions?
On the connecting the Four Seas Conference with the technology committees that we have at each school, is that something that those members are required to go to, or just encouraged to go to?
Encouraged.
It's all voluntary, nobody is required.
Right. The administrators were strongly encouraged. Both districts, yeah.
Understood.
Strongly.
Strongly.
That's good. And I, and I assume the, you didn't mention it, but I think it goes without, probably the same way with Nancy Dugan and her group, that's, that's Amanda Torre.
Yeah, we're required, we're required to do that every year. I, I don't think we have to send everybody every year, but every other year we do. And then the cooks have to go the, the off year, but, you know, this is the year we're making everyone. And that, those come, that comes out of her funds, and, and we've been doing that for probably the last six years now.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Same.
And we have a same. But it goes with the majority, so we still have five of them.
Next on the list, reports. We provided you with some information here in 2015, you know, we've been talking about that. We had the, we had the ribbon cuttings tonight for the gyms, but also, we did a guaranteed, guaranteed energy savings contract in 2015. And as, as part of that, we, you know, we guaranteed, they guaranteed us so much savings. And, and they have the spreadsheets and all the different things to show how everything was calculated. And this is not an exact science, because, you know, you don't, you don't, you don't control Mother Nature. But with the calculations that they said that we would save, and they said we would save $2,434. The actual savings through our billing and all the different things that they had to calculate, we actually saved in the first quarter, $4,731. So, we over-doubled what the guaranteed savings would have been. So, the guaranteed energy savings contract for, you know, the unit ventilators, the air conditioning, the controls, the electrical panels, that is proving to be beneficial. So, I'd like to, you know, record, show that the guaranteed energy savings has been a plus so far. We have the 2017 budget calendar, that's very important. We will have a board meeting on August the 8th to ask permission to publish. We'll have a public hearing on August the 22nd. And I think that's what we ended up with, yeah, August the 22nd. My, my calendar here had both dates still on there. And then we will adopt the, in the September board meeting. And immediately after the September board meeting, we have some paperwork we have to publish as well. So, there is the new budget calendar. We have the fuel reports for the transportation department. We also would like to announce that, which we generally don't, don't talk about athletics a lot in our board meetings, but the football team has been invited to play at Lucas Oil Stadium with a guaranteed income of $6,000. So, the, we have accepted that, and, and our football team will be going up to Lucas Oil Stadium to play a Saturday football game. I have the board, Jeff Gentile, Greg Schmidt, and Amy Will scheduled to go to the Board Academy on Monday, May the 23rd. Make sure that that is still correct, and you still want to go.
Sure you didn't want to go that Sunday?
This Sunday?
No.
I'm already leaving this Sunday for Nashville.
We will have a special board meeting, which is a little bit of change from what we have posted right now. But we will have a special board meeting on Wednesday, May the 18th. We will, we will have opened the projects for 2016. The bid opening is on the 17th. We will have opened those, and then we'll need approval to move forward on those projects. We will also have some personnel issues that we'll need to take care of. So, I'm asking the board that, that we start the meeting at 7:30, an executive session for 30 minutes to go over the personnel stuff. We'll open the public meeting at eight, eight o'clock, and then review the personnel issues and go over all of that. And then hopefully, hopefully, we'll be awarding a, a contract to someone to do the 2016 summer projects. The next regular meeting is Monday, June the 13th, and that's when we'll be passing and looking at those policies that we described earlier. And the regular meeting will be at 6:30, and executive session will be at 5:30. And that is all I have for this board.
Anybody else have anything?
I did have one thing. I know last year, we had the legislators come in.
Last year?
Didn't know if we were interested, and if you wanted me to try contacting them again, see if they're interested in coming to the board meeting, or if we want to hold off another year.
I, I thought it was, I thought it was a good thing to have. One of the things that we may want to consider is having them all together at the same time.
I agree.
For like around an open discussion. And maybe it doesn't even have to be at our board meeting, but maybe we can sponsor them to, to come in and.
Thought or whatever, maybe.
Community center or something.
Yeah, this is election year, so this might be.
Yeah.
Time to do that.
And maybe, maybe we can invite them to do a, a day or a night here. We can.
Not necessarily at a board meeting.
Not necessarily a board meeting, but.
See if we could.
But we could, we could sponsor, or, or the school, we could have somebody sponsor them to come and speak.
I'm sure they will be most interested in doing it this summer. I know attendance at these type things in the summer is always really difficult.
But the election's in November, so maybe we can get them here in the fall.
If the session starts back up, they probably won't be as open.
It's, is this one the short or long? The one coming up is the long?
The long.
Yeah. And I think it's more, it's better for us to have them before the session starts anyway, so we can pick their, maybe try to.
I just really hate to do it if we're going to five people show up too.
Right.
Well.
I don't know. And, and that's something too, that if, if they're willing, I mean, maybe we could do a. We could, I think it's, I think it's something we reach out and try to get to.
Go ahead and reach out to them and see if.
See if they'd be, I think first of all, see if they'd be interested in doing it as a group.
Okay.
And then second, we can pick what we'd rather do. Good point. Anybody else?
I had a congratulations to Mrs. Kester on her Assistant Principal of the Year in District 11, so.
Was that just, that was just announced today?
Yeah, that just came out today. Absolutely.
I did not see that.
We didn't see that.
That was not on Facebook, so it's not official.
Is the middle school District 11 Principal of the Year.
Look at that. Very much.
All right, you know, I didn't see it either.
No. We're going to have to get that on Facebook, because if it's not on Facebook, it's not official.
And Kelly has won it a couple of times.
So then, like, so when would we find out if the, what's the next one, is it?
It's Fall Conference in November.
It's Fall Conference in November.
And what, it's, it's not district, but what is it?
It's the state.
State.
The 12 districts go for state.
12 districts come, so there's 12 districts in the state, and they come together for one.
And the assistance is first, the assistance conference is Fridays and Saturday and Sunday, and then the principal starts on Sunday when the other one ends, so they're back to back.
So, we'll have somebody up there for the assistants and somebody up there for the principals.
The school really started something, yeah.
Yeah, he did, we've got a trend going of awards, well done, well done. Anything else? All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Mr. Schmidt, got it, all right. So, we have a motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to adjourn, and we will not vote, we adjourn.